Okay, we're running a little late today. I had all kinds of exciting stuff to talk about in our study session today. So we'll go ahead and call a slightly late December 15th meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this time, if you would all who are able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations today, so we'll open this up to our citizens for them. This is an opportunity for anyone who has anything they'd like to bring before the city commission that is not on today's agenda to bring forth to us. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 8, 2014. Item 6.2, resolution number 14-7164, reaffirming the solid waste management plan for Salina County.
Is there an item on the consent agenda a commissioner wishes to remove or amend? If not, entertain a motion.
I would like to remove the minutes, please.
Okay, removing 6.1.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, less the minutes.
Okay. Motion to approve the -- I'm sorry, did we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, there we go. A motion to approve the consent agenda, which is basically item 6.2. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. We'll come back here at 6:1.
On page two of the minutes, by the way, I would like to say that I really like the new format of the minutes that includes more of response from people that are questioned during the course of the meeting. On page two, there's right towards the middle of the page, Marymount Road. There are two lines where the word "Road" is not capitalized. Marymount is, "Road" is not. That's it.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
May I motion to approve the remaining item 6.1 and a second with the change to "Road" to be capitalized? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10759, amending Salina Code Section 31.6, definition of perennial violator within the property maintenance code.
Ordinance number 14-10758 was passed on first reading on December 8, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone for the public to address this issue? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of ordinance numbers 14-10759 on second reading, amending Salina Code Section 31.6, definition of perennial violator within the property maintenance code.
Second.
I read 14-10758. Is that mistyped, or am I missing something here? On the background section, this was 10758, but the ordinance number is 10759? It is 759? Okay, so I'll correct myself on that then. Okay. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor approving ordinance number 14-10759? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, receive and review the 2013 audit report from Meis, Hauser &amp; Company.
Mr. Franz.
With the completion of the final audit and the joint health department, we've now finalized our audit also. It was pending that document for, I believe, one of the paragraphs on the auditor's comments. You have a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the -- which includes the auditor's opinions on the financial statements. It is, once again, an unqualified opinion, meaning that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and conformist and generally accepted accounting principles. Document is rather extensive, runs about 120 pages. Important parts of the document, if you're going to focus on a few areas, would be the auditor's opinion, which is on page one, management discussion and analysis, starting on page three. There's a couple of citywide statements on pages 14 and 15. And then the notes to the financial statements begin on page 25. For the most part, good sleepy time reading, but you can learn some things from those. This year, we were subject to a federal audit, a federal single audit that happens periodically. This year, we were kicked into that status because of the water supply loan fund, which had some federal funds attached to it that were passed through to us. Schedules on the federal audit start on page 113. We do have Abram Krizl up here from Meis, Hauser &amp; Company, who was the auditor in charge, and I don't know if he has any comments he'd like to make at this point or not.
I'm not anything significant, but if you want to explain.
Yeah. There's probably over 15,000 people watching this at home on TV who may want to hear what you have to say.
No, I'll just point out that with the federal audit comes a couple of other requirements, and there are, at the back of the report, the last four pages, we're required to, in conjunction with that federal audit, issue two other reports. First one is basically to report on internal controls within the city and compliance with laws and regulations, and our requirement there is that we would report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in controls, or we would report any significant noncompliance. We found none, so that's obviously the result you'd want. And then the second, the last two pages, again, deal directly with that, those federal fund audits, and it's the same two requirements, that we have to report any significant deficiencies in regards to the federal awards or significant noncompliance, and again, we found none. So those would be the key points this year. I think next year, you'll be subject to the federal audit again. It's based on spending more than a half million dollars of federal aid, and it's been, I think, three or four years since the city was subject to that, so this was something newer this year for us. That's all I've got.
I've got a quick question for you. Last year, and Rod, this might also be for you as well, is that in our audit last year, there was a special note in there about starting to, we're then being audited and had to claim some of the...
Capers.
Some of the capers, right. Is that, what, how is that significantly different this year than it has in past years?
It doesn't go to effect, hasn't gotten to effect yet.
Oh, it hasn't?
We're still sort of waiting on capers to fully explain how they're going to put those numbers together, but that will be a note disclosure in the future, and once we get that data from capers.
Okay, so the note last year was that that might be coming this year, and so it's...
Well, within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
But it's coming.
Yeah, there was a, capers put on a conference or seminar a couple of months ago, they kind of discussed that in their plan, but it still hasn't come to fruition yet, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Well, I don't know if it's staff or the accountant, one of the two, but on page 34 of the audit, there's a restatement of equity, and I was just curious about how that came to pass, if there was, you know, changing of rules in the middle of the stream, or...
No, not necessarily. And the bulk of it there is the capital asset adjustment, and, you know, we routinely have a capital asset adjustment. It usually just has to do with going through the capital projects that are going on, and when they reach completion, sometimes there's an adjustment there for, well, we anticipated the final project cost being and what it ended up being, and then sometimes there's a shift between funds there as well. So that's what that restatement, the bulk of it is. The accounts receivable adjustment, memory serves me correct, we changed the valuation of the allowance for doubtful accounts from the previous year, and that's what led to that adjustment. And then there's a, the bond payable adjustment was just simply moving a liability from governmental funds to an enterprise fund. So it just shifted the liability from one fund to another, basically.
On page 118 of the audit, there's a sentence at the end of the paragraph, "Compliance and Other Matters," said, "We do not, the results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters." The next sentence says, "However, we noted certain other matters that we reported to management of the city in a separate letter dated September 15, 2014."
Right, you should have a copy of that as well. We issue that every year. It's called our auditor's, our management comment letter.
I was trying to remember if we...
Yeah, and that's basically where we would just, you know, make either minor control recommendations or, you know, provide the city some information about upcoming legislation or things of that nature, but it's not something that would warrant being in the audit report as a significant finding, so.
I have a couple of questions for Rod, too.
As part of a potential, just to pull on the thread of the earlier potential upcoming legislation, I have heard some things, I don't know if it's through the auditing or the accounting, you know, the original reporting is that incentives, tax abatements and so on like that being, it might again be a question for Mr. Franz if it's not through an audit, but a reporting of value of abatements and other incentives, is that, and maybe even Mr. Gage knows on that, would that be something that would potentially be in the form of an audit, or would that be in the form of, how would we, I think you know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Yeah, I would recommend that you don't modify your structure of what's contained in your audit unless the, you know, federal law, state law, or generally accepted accounting principles would call for that. So I can't tell you for sure if that piece of information is being called for in the future in the audit, be more of a question for auditor, but aside from that, it would just, the information you're talking about would be probably just a simple report we could prepare for you.
Yeah, and I think it's a state, I think it's something probably driven from state legislation.
I don't think that's something that would be, I mean, actually, in the audit report, I haven't run across anything that would, that I've seen lately that would require that. I'm not sure, I guess, what that is exactly.
You had a couple of questions for Rod? Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, on page 65, we have the combined statements of revenues and expenditures. One question I had was, on page 65 with the bicentennial center, we have expenses of $126,395 and no revenue associated with that. Would that be something odd?
I would, you know, there is a portion of the transient gas tax that flowed to the bicentennial center. We would also have, and I would have to, 2013 is a long time ago, we probably did supplement it to some degree from the general fund. Now, when you say there's no revenue, it may not show as revenue, it may show as an interfund transfer, in which case it may net out at the lower part of that schedule.
$126,895 to give a balance of 500.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there would be no bicentennial center revenue associated with that. That is our supplement to the facility.
Okay. On page 100, there's a chart that's very interesting to read. It looks like there are three numbers in the first column that did not receive a year designation, and that, I was going to throw it, that might need to be modified.
That's on page 100?
Page 100, correct. It just says 111 instead of 2006 or 2005.
It was sourced to the county clerk, so it could be their, it could be their typo.
It looks like an Excel spreadsheet or something. Anyway, one other thing I was going to mention, that was kind of interesting to me, on page 107, it talks about the ratio of net general bonded debt outstanding per capita. And for, in our situation, we've, from 2004 to 2013, we've gone from $703 per capita of bonded indebtedness in 2004 to twice that, almost twice that, of $1,274 in 10 years later. And I was thinking, well, that sounds like a lot of money to me, but I went back to the internet and looked up what Junction City owes, and they're up north of $5,200 per person. And so at that point, I was thinking, man, we're smart, we're doing things well.
You will find the bulk of that change is the aquatic facility, and which, of course, is paid for out of the dedicated sales tax.
Right.
So that's where the bulk of that change is, is in that large project.
Okay. Anything else on there? No? Okay, thanks, guys. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? I'm only asking, there's really nobody here, but, okay, I'd entertain a motion to potentially receive the audit report.
I would move that we receive and review the, or receive the 2013 audit report from Meis, Hauser &amp; Company.
Second.
Motion is second to receive the 2013 audit report from Meis, Hauser &amp; Company. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, first reading ordinance number 14-10760, authorizing the city manager to execute rural fire protection contracts.
Mayor, city commissioners, I'm here today as your fire chief to present the combined effort of finance, the legal department, and the results of our study session we had about six months ago or so on rural fire contracts. This blue sheet today authorizes the city manager to execute those contracts, to send them out to our regular customers and get those back and get those in place. I guess if you have any questions, I can handle the operational stuff, and finance goes to Rod, and I know Aaron's here, who was a great help out of the city attorney's office in getting this drafted. So if there's any questions I can answer for you, I'd be glad to.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff on this?
I just had a question about the rates that we're charging for the service. It looks like $25,000 is the ceiling.
It's a cap.
Is that in writing somewhere, that whatever we charge you will not be more than $25,000?
It's actually in the ordinance, it's actually in the executing ordinance that set that rural fire contract in place.
Is that adequate? Is this $25,000 cover?
I believe so, for the number of times that we're actually responding into those facilities, but I can tell you that most of those are very large facilities, and if we would have a major explosion at X side, or a major explosion at Phillips, or something catastrophic, we will eat every bit of that $25,000 up and more.
Well, I was just wondering, is $25,000 adequate for some of the larger employers?
I would think that would be, our history has shown that that's been okay. We only go after it two or three times a year. There haven't been large incidents, and we haven't lost money on the contracts.
Because we're pretty much self-insured on this.
Yes, we are, yeah. It's a service that we provide, that different communities handle in different ways, and it's developed kind of at its own pace. We haven't, we haven't gone out and sold it, and we haven't, our customers have remained the same over the seven years that I've been here. I haven't seen any change in it, so it rolls from year to year.
Chief, does this mainly address commercial?
Yes.
Commercial, what about the existing residential?
Although, we did tell the existing residential customers that they will have an additional year. They can sign up this year, and they will get the ability to sign up during this year, but several of them I've talked to on the phone said they were planning on dropping the coverage anyway.
Yeah.
And so I don't see it as a big hot button issue, because I only got two calls on it, and we sent, before this letter that you have in your packet, we sent two other letters out in advance to let them know we were talking about it in the study session, what came out of the study session, where a direction was going to be, and then here are the final documents that went out to them. So they're fully aware of what their options are.
So there have been opportunities for feedback, and the reception's been positive?
Exactly. Yeah, it's been, it's been good.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor and commissioners, it might be, you might wonder why you're doing this by ordinance. It is a statutory requirement that these be approved by ordinance rather than resolution, as would be more customary.
I was wondering that.
I figured, that was why, I saw that on your mind.
Just thinking what I was going to have for dinner tonight. Not that I don't take this seriously, but I figure we're in good hands with the chief out here, and he was doing the right thing, but thank you. Okay, that's great, thank you. Anyone from the public on this? Okay, see you now, I'll bring it back to the board for possible action.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 14-10760 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute rural fire protection contracts.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance number 14-10760. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.4, accept settlement of final city-county health department residual balance.
Mr. Franz.
City-county joint health department ceased to operate as a joint venture as of December 31, 2013. At that time, Salina County assumed responsibility for operating the health department side of that operation. City of Salina assumed responsibility for animal control. At the time of separation, we all knew that the joint health department had accumulated a significant fund balance. By mutual agreement, it was determined that we would hold those funds for the purpose of liquidating any liabilities related to the operation of the joint health department, and for completion of the final annual audit, and at that time, we would allocate the remaining assets between the city and county. We are now at the point to where we're ready to do that. We did work through the final allocation based on a spreadsheet and based on various commitments of the parties to each other, and the result is the city of Salina will receive a total of $910,965. Salina County will receive $838,100. The amount we get, $500,000, will be credited back to the special sales tax fund, which we had fronted for the purposes of their building, or our building repair, our share of the building repair. $161,250, that is in a special fund that must be used for the benefit of the animal shelter, and the remaining $249,715 will roll to our general fund. I guess I'll stand for any questions at this point.
Any questions for staff?
I've got a three-part question here. On the fiscal note, just on the allocation and distribution of those funds, could you briefly tell us, first of all, what the animal shelter donation fund and what the, kind of some of the reasons, and then also knowing that one of our goals here is to, with the budget at least, is to help bolster the general fund, and maybe just kind of speak as to maybe what the reason...
The donation fund consists of monies that have been given to the animal shelter, and is simply, has been provided to them with the stipulation it be used for some of their purposes. In looking at the operation of that fund historically, and looking at what's been paid out of that account, it has been used a lot for neuter and space services when they adopt animals out, which of course keeps us from bringing more animals in in the future. That has probably been the largest single entry that I noticed, and there were, you know, some other miscellaneous sorts of expenses related to the animal shelter they also paid out of that fund. As far as I know, these funds are generally slated for the benefit of the animal shelter, so it's not like it's for a particular part or piece of the operation, it's simply for the benefit of the animal shelter. There is, there are some additional resources held by the community foundation that are much more specific in nature, and we, of course, don't carry those in our book because we don't consider them to be our funds until we do something that meets the qualifications for those funds. So that is why that is called out separately.
Commissioners, real quick with that, though, because those funds come in from different individuals, as Rod said, sometimes they're earmarked for a particular purpose, but when they're not, we have some flexibility, so if something breaks down, we need to repair it, or we need to redo a room, or whatever that might be, replaced, could even be replaced chairs, or tables, or what have you, there is some flexibility with those funds that aren't earmarked for particular purposes, that can be used in the shelter for that purpose, so at the time that those needs come about, rather than relying on the general fund, those funds are available. There is still a benefit to the general fund with this donation fund in those circumstances.
Well, that's good, because I think there are a lot of people that generously donate to the animal shelter, and I think it's important that they know that that, that those funds are staying there and...
Those funds are held in a separate account, and we'll keep them in a separate fund on our books, so.
Do you know if any of the veterinarians help with those spay and neuter services? I mean, do they, do we pay them the same as an individual would pay if they...
I could not answer that question, Commissioner. I do not know.
I could answer that from the, yes, they are paid, and at a, with an amount to a reduced rate, but just make up for the volume, but they do provide the service.
You're not moonlighting, are you?
Not on the animals, sir.
Well, you know, one of the...
Well, he was the director of the board.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, he was, he was, but I just couldn't remember how that worked, veterinarians on the board, but I just didn't remember whether they were kicking in a little bit.
I would add that the calculations here are based, starting on the audited balance of the health department as of 12/31, plus some transactions, most of the transactions since that time, there have been a few transactions that were not included, and so the amount that's going to get distributed is a few thousand dollars less than total shown here, so there'll have to be a final adjustment. There were some final settlement issues relating, I think, to a credit card machine, and there were a couple of credits also, so those popped out of the account after the audit was completed.
Was the roughly one-third, two-thirds breakdown between the special sales tax fund and the general fund, is that, is that how we funded it, and is that then how we, or is it, or is there some other?
No, the $500,000 going back to the special sales tax is a reimbursement of our advance to them earlier this year. The amount going to the general fund is just residual.
Okay. All right.
The animal shelter is currently running a little campaign on a potential dog park for somewhere in Salina, and I was just curious, too, would, this may not even be a question for you, would that donation fund be a possible source of funding for a dog park?
Yeah, I would guess. That's a good question. I think we'd have to look at the donations and how they're directed to answer that, but I'm going to make an assumption that if there isn't a specific earmarked use, that there's a possibility for that. I don't, I don't know, and we haven't asked the question, if the use of the funds is limited to within the walls or within the function, and certainly if it's within the function, it could be used that way. So we'll look at it. I'm assuming that there is some flexibility, just don't know how many dollars could be used for that purpose.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Rod. Anyone from the public on this? Okay, seeing none, I'd bring it back to the board. We used to sell tickets to this thing, what happened? You gotta get some new material.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the settlement of the final city-county health department residual balance.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the settlement for the final city-county health department residual balance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business. Any other business anywhere at all? Oh?
I would appreciate a brief executive session, and we've had a development that I need to apprise you of.
Okay.
Again, my 10 minutes will easily do it, five if we hustle.
Okay, so better go with the 10. Before we go into that, I do want to point out that I did, I did go to the symphony show this weekend at the Stiefel Theater. It was on Saturday night and Sunday, and I went to both. I was doing some recording, trying to do some testing stuff, and I had not been to that in a couple of years, and if you guys have not been, it is absolutely world-class. I mean, I could, I mean, I knew, I knew they were good, but it was, I mean, it was amazing, Peggy Sims dancers, the costumes, the lighting, the, of course, the orchestra themselves, great, the Salina crowd was there, the children's choir, Kent's Western choir, I mean, it was, it's probably, I was actually sitting there watching this thing, thinking about all the big artists we bring to town. we bring to town, and they're, you know, anywhere from thirty-five, whatever bucks ticket, at twenty-two to twenty-seven dollars a ticket or whatever, it's probably the best ticket price, best show in town. I mean, it was, I mean, I could not be more overwhelmed at what it was, it was just like over the top. Audience thought so, too, obviously, but anyway, I want to point that out, so if you don't get a chance to go, I know they're doing another big show in February, or January, or March, or something, another kind of a themed one, and of course, I think they have concerts every month, but anyway, go, because it was, I...it was pretty much sold out, there were still a few tickets, and I thought if people knew how good this was, there'd have been a line and a demand for another show, because it was really good, so...homegrown.
Yes, I'm sorry, it'd be attorney-client privilege.
Ten minutes.
Any more other business?
No. No.
I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in matters, and reconvene at, hmm, four fifty?
Second.
Motion is second to go into executive session and reconvene at four fifty, do we anticipate any business afterwards? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session.